They are there, too.
They are indeed.
But Bruce will be here. But we can go ahead with the minutes of the November 20 regular meeting. Does anyone have any comments or corrections to those minutes?
Nope, they're fine.
Okay, we'll adopt those minutes as submitted. Next thing on the agenda is a public hearing continuation of the St. Mary's Church Corporation modifications or special exception for the filling and grading. Is there anyone, does the applicant want to, apparently, speak?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate your notice. For some of the businesses to offer this, hosting in the notice. We're here for a small item, and it's part of a larger application for the proposed connector project. And that item specifically is for work right here, which is related to the reconstruction of the head wall. It's an existing head wall. And it is work that is within the floodplain, and the work on the ground is basically. So the condition of the head wall presently is one where the actual last section of pipe and the vertical head wall itself is actually taken over and leaning forward to the point where the last pipe in the slope is actually disconnected from the pipes above. So we've got a lot of water activity that's not going through the pipe, it's actually going down and around and underneath. So the proposal is to reconstruct that, replace that pipe, replace the head wall, re-heal the associated grading on the uphill side of it, and then at the same time to implement a plunge pool that would help to grab some sediment that comes out of that pipe. Majority of the drainage that goes to that point and flows through that point is actually from the DOT's drainage system on Meadow Street. And at present, there is really no structure or no method by which sediment is removed from that runoff, and so it is coming out of the pipe and on into what the area to a variable extent, but it's not insignificant. So the propose, beyond the reconstruction of the head wall itself, we're actually proposing to do limited excavation and implementation of, or placement of modified drip wrap to create a plunge pool so that we have some method by which sediments in first flush can get removed and actually it's a structure that can be maintained so we can remove sediment from there on a regular basis. We have been before wetlands on this activity as part of the larger project, and they have approved the action. There were some other ancillary discussions in regards to wetlands involved in that, and we're here in regards to the flood. So there is a limited amount of removal and a relatively modest amount of reimplementation of replacement of materials. And again, we're not placing solid fill materials, we're placing materials that would trap sediment, basically, in pet plunge pool. If you'd like to see the particulars of that, I have that piece of the plan just isolated on 11 by 17. If you feel that it's necessary and you want to see some of the items involved in that.
Anybody want to?
You made the copies.
Okay. Let's stop the minute, welcome Bruce, who was elected to his position. He was trapped in the celebration and, you know, and Mike, who got re-elected. Congratulations.
Thanks very much. So this is the same as what's on the submitted drawing? It's just... You guys want to work to?
Too old to.
Yeah. We do have here tonight our project engineer. If you have particular questions on the details, we're going to... Basically, we designed the pool to be as large as we could on the property that's available. The church owns only a postage stamp of that entire body of wetlands, so there isn't more that the church can do. However, considering that there's nothing there, we think it's a substantial pool.
Who's responsible for cleaning out the sediment occasionally? Just curious.
The property owner. I don't think we could expect the entity to show up on a regular basis.
And who owns the property?
The church owns to here. This is Westminster School. It's the pond, basically, and that's all it is.
So the state has a right of way for the stormwater?
Right of way through the church property here, but they don't have, to our knowledge, there's not any payment in that sense. So they own the discharge point, or rights to the discharge point.
Did you already cover the volume of discharge question? Is the discharge amount going off the property any different with the proposed?
Oh, no, it is not. It's statistically the same.
And you haven't gotten to it yet, but how about to the rear, where the roadway is?
Up in here?
Yeah, is there water going off the property there? Does that change?
No, we're actually, everything in the back of the property, we're all capturing and rooting to existing outlet patterns.
So the volume doesn't change?
Whatever.
Okay.
So I think it's going to be handled a lot tighter than it is, but yes, including.
Any other questions? We're in public audience, a public hearing, so the alternates may join if they'd like to ask questions.
Thank you.
Anybody in the attendance, questions? Anybody in the audience want to speak to this application? Jamie, is there anything the staff wants to say?
Just, Mr. Chairman, just from an administrative standpoint, the hearing is open. If the hearing closes, you have 65 days to make a decision. With regards to our review, staff has prepared a brief report regarding this application that is in your file. We also have prepared a draft motion for you for contemplation during the regular portion of your meeting. That motion on this matter, as well as Agenda Item 53. We also have a draft motion for you, because again, the special exception is necessary for you to act favorable on the site plan application before you...
So we have to act on this special exception before we act on this?
You will see, there's a, staff is suggesting an adjustment to your agenda to move the special exception discussion prior to the site plan amendment discussion. The town engineer, Jeff Shady, has reviewed this and has no additional comment as it relates to the storm drainage.
Thank you. No one in the public wants to speak? Anybody, any more questions from the commission?
I move that we close the public hearing for Application 1754.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Okay. Motion carries. Six, nothing. The public hearing is closed. The next application is 1740 of Tim Martin for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C8. This public hearing has been closed. You want to... Going to recuse one of our members. We have until the 24th of January to act on this application. We had some questions the last time that staff and the town attorney were going to work on. I think we're in a position now to table it again until...
Ms. Chairman, if I may, as Mr. Ryan has mentioned this evening, the public hearing closed at your November meeting. By statute, you have 65 days to render a decision on that application. Your next regularly scheduled meeting is December 8. I had a discussion with...
December 18.
No, December...
December 18, sorry.
18.
December 18 is your next regularly scheduled meeting. I had a conversation with council, and he would be available on the 18 to attend your meeting. He was not available to attend this evening's meeting. Unless there are any questions of staff, staff would make a recommendation at your table as Agenda Item for this evening and request council to be present on the 18 if that's what you would like to do as a commissioner.
Well, I have a question. I wondered if you could just, I don't, if the pleasure of the commission essentially is to put this off until January, I don't object to that, but I'm interested in whether there's, you have further comments to add to your letter to Dave of November 20 that cited chapter and verse item by item, the points of concern and the findings that you offer as advice to the council, I mean, to the commission. Was there anything that's changed in the last two weeks since the November 20 meeting in terms of your reading of that application, according to that letter with the attached material? And the town attorney indicated he had nothing to add, that he too was convinced that the application was not consistent with the regulation, the bottom line. And so my question is just whether anything's changed in terms of your assessment or your thinking about it. And if the commission feels like they need to have the town attorney here to take a vote on it, well, that's all right with me. But I'm interested in whether you can help me with my thinking over the next few weeks. Or am I looking for something that's not there?
Bruce, I think the recommendation was that we make sure that the motion that we make is with the concurrence of the town attorney so that we've properly handled the...
Oh, I missed that. Okay.
...handled the situation. And I think we're not prepared to fly without him.
Well, I'm not asking a question of the commission. I was just asking a question of Jamie, who said, "Do you have questions?" That's my question. If you don't want to respond to it, okay, we'll take it up at the pleasure of the commission whenever we want.
Yeah.
Again, Mr. Chairman, staff has stated your public hearing closed at your last regularly scheduled meeting. We're, you know, based on some brief discussion at the meeting, if your council would like to be in attendance, and he is available on the 18, staff will work with council to be prepared for that.
So I think we should table it until the 18.
Excuse me, on the...
Ms. Chairman, the public hearing has closed. By state statute, you're not allowed to take any additional testimony.
From anybody, including the staff, no new information.
Excuse me. Anybody here have any comments on the proposal to table it until the 18?
I'll second the motion if that thing...
We need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity for the commission members, although the hearing
has closed, you do have access to staff. Staff's testimony or questions have to be based on information contained in the record.
Right, no new information.
So you still have access.
That's what I was trying to do, but if you want to wait until January, that's okay. I'm asking a question about the record.
So you read the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion regarding Application 1740 that we continue, that we table it until our December 18 meeting at 7:00 in the May meeting.
You can all second that. Thank you, Dave.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, we're tabled, six, nothing. The next application is 1752. Staff have comments on this?
For clarity, Mr. Chairman, on this, Application 17-52, staff did receive an email. It was addressed to Kerry Viber dated November 28, 2017. Please pass on that. Art FX will not be pursuing further signs from Mark Mitchell's car wash. A sign by the road reading "car wash" with an arrow pointing to the car wash entrance would be the only sign of true consequence. However, I was brought onboard too late, and the current script for forward motion is not one I have written. The car currently operates primarily to wash Mitchell's own cars. Unless I can help change that, I believe the enterprise will continue to do the same. From what I can see, we are chasing our tails, listening to dissertations on the inconsequential regards Lauren Rosen, President. We reviewed this, have read it more than once, and have come to the conclusion since Art FX was the applicant, that this email functionally withdraws that application. The Mitchell Auto Group was not the applicant, they are the owners of the property. The signed company submitted the application, and by email, they say they are no longer pursuing signs on the Mitchell property for the car wash. So it's our understanding this application has been withdrawn.
So that we don't have to take any action on that?
I would say no further action is needed.
So everybody agree with that interpretation? We'll go under the next application. 1753 of the LRC Group, I believe...
Well, I would first like to make a motion that we amend our agenda here to take up Application 1754 ahead of Application 1754.
May I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second's by Mike Doyle. All in favor? Aye. Okay, six, nothing. We amended our agenda. Okay. Application 1754 is the special exception for filling and grading. Do you have a recommendation from staff? Jamie? Does the staff have a recommendation for this?
You should have a draft attachment A.
Someone, I thought it's...
I can read that from...
I don't know if there's an attachment A.
You have correspondence from Mike Living, Assistant Town Manager, referencing Attachment A, dated Monday, December 4, 2017, in the address to Simsbury zoning commission. Again, Mr. Chairman, before you have a draft motion. The motion is written in a favorable manner as it relates to the special exception pursuant to Article 7 with regards to filling in the floodplain.
Are we ready to make a motion on this?
I'm ready to make a motion on this.
You want to really let you go?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Application 1754 of the LRC Group agent, St. Mary's Church Corporation owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section M dot 4B dot 4 of the Simsbury, town of Simsbury zoning regulations for filling and grading of land in a floodplain zone on the properties located at 940 Hot Meadow Street, 942 Hot Meadow Street, 944 Hot Meadow Street, 946 Hot Meadow Street, 948 Hot Meadow Street, and 950 Hot Meadow Street, Zone SC1. The exception approval is subject to the following conditions of approval. One, any changes to filling and grading associated with the stormwater outlet improvements will require approval of the zoning commission. No changes are to be made in the field without approval from the commission.
Second it? If you'd like, Mike. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? That carries, six, nothing. Now we can take on 1753, which is the site plan approval. And I believe that there is a staff recommendation on the site plan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you are being handed a letter dated, that will be dated, 12/4/2017, addressed to David Ryan, Chairman of the Simsbury Zoning Commission regarding the application number 15 dash, excuse me, 17-53 for 940 Hot Meadow, which is the St. Mary's Church property and the school. There's a conglomeration of multiple parcels that comprise the church and school property. From an administrative standpoint, this is site plan approval, you have 65 days to act, including with additional extensions. We have done an attachment, Attachment A, which is a recommended draft motion. I know there are representatives here from the church this evening. We have a recommendation of 18 items. I would like to amend that 18 to include a 19. That 19 should reference a letter we received from the town engineer dated December 4, who is making three recommendations. Item number one, provide final plans with applicable professional stamp and signature. That is already contained in our motion, our draft motion to you. Item number two is revise and submit final engineering summary report for the proposed building addition and site improvement with an accurate model of the subsurface detention. Provide plans indicate a chamber system will be utilized rather than 48-inch HDPE pipe. And three is verify the size and condition of the existing sanitary lateral, which is noted as a 4-inch PVC pipe. On the connection card, proposed plan includes two 6-inch laterals to be tied into the existing lateral via new manhole. At a minimum, the existing lateral should be upgraded to a 6-inch SBR-35 PVC pipe. At a minimum, unless anticipated, those require a larger size, applicant should revise accordingly and coordinate with WPCA. This is my recommendation to add, condition 19, would be to be incorporate items number two and three contained in Jeff Shady's letter dated December 4, 2017, with regards to stormwater management and sanitary sewer line.
Okay. Are we satisfied with the presentation we had in that material?
Yes.
Mike, you want to do the draft motion?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, before you do that, do you want staff, just to paraphrase, what's before you, or are you comfortable with the wording of the motion?
Big ups, Mr. Chairman.
I would say, from a material standpoint, items 1 through 13 are kind of administrative in nature, filing plans, filing ad hoc bills, pre-construction meetings. Items 14, 15, 16, 17, item 14 is, the applicant is, we did receive it late today, just before 5:00, but have not had an opportunity to review it, where they're shifting the parking and interior circulation in front of the proposed school addition slightly west. We've discussed that last month, so that would be item number 14. Item 15 is the final landscaping plan. That will reflect the adjustments associated with that circle. We're also potentially anticipating a change during the construction sequencing. If the contractor asks to remove more vegetation along Iron Horse, that we would have an opportunity to review that request and act accordingly. If they were taking vegetation down, we would be looking for a revised landscape plan to address that immediately. Item number 16 is, there was discussion on the eastwardly side of the site, there's a small retaining wall. I believe it does not exceed, it goes from 0 feet to 6 feet. The applicant was proposing a fence on top of that, a 4-foot fence that was originally called out as a chain link fence. They proposed an alternative to that chain link fence, which is called a welded wire fence. There's a little more architecture to it, instead of just being a chain link fence. It varies in dimension between the squares, and there's some vertical and horizontal changes, so it just doesn't look like chain link. It looks more ornamental in nature. Again, it's only a 4-foot tall fence for a small segment on the eastwardly side of the parking area on the Iron Horse side. And then item number 17 is just a final review of the treatment of the light standards with regards to their base inconsistency with lighting that is already contained in the Simsbury Center, as well as recommendations contained in the Simsbury design guidelines for the town.
So on that point, are they using the Simsbury light?
They are using a more standard light, but the pole, you still have opportunities to make the pole and the base match. It's an LED, more standard light fixture in a commercial setting. It's not a lantern. Again, it's east of the sidewalk and internal to the site.
Jamie, on the relocation of the...
Internal?
The driveway?
Yes.
Of the, it says on the east side, shouldn't that say the west side? 14. Well, the last thing that says move the travel aisles to the, shouldn't that be to the west?
To the west. Thank you.
16, or 14. So the last phrase is...
The west by 5 to 6 feet.
And in the, in 16, applicant should provide a detail for the...
That is on the east side of the project.
Right, but what does that mean? Provide a detail. Are we, are they going to have it approved or...
The applicant may have a picture of that this evening. Again, we received an email very late today.
Well, my point is, in this, this language here is either...
Is it going to be approved or not approved?
Mr. Chairman, come in.
I understand that, the language here, however...
Or is that the submission?
This is the submission they emailed to us today. This detail needs to make it onto the site plans. So consistency with the proposed barbed wire will be reviewed when it's put on the site plan for...
Okay, 16 to me should say that they will, that will change the detail to match the submission.
When staff wrote this this afternoon, we did not have...
We understand that, but now that we have it...
Now that we have it, we want this to, we want them to provide the detail that you want, not any detail of barbed wire.
So you want to change A to the...
Right?
You're right. Jerry, that's the right thing. Change A to the...
I want the St. Mary's.
Hey, now we got it. All right. Do you want to do the motion?
That's a lot of reading.
It's a lot of reading.
Do I have an opportunity to comment?
Pardon?
Does the applicant have an opportunity to comment on the east side?
You want to stop us?
Stop. Only for minor clerks.
Go ahead.
I know. I'm afraid that I don't regret that.
Go ahead.
On the shift, item 14. 14. We've been working at that. It seems like 4 feet of a shift is a sweet spot for us. At 5 to 6, it's going to get a little bit compressed at the curb cut. If we could live with 4, it makes a substantial difference as it is. We do have a working sketch. Again, it's informal at this point, but we wanted to do enough research into it that we didn't get locked into it, and we're pretty satisfied.
So you would prefer that we make it 4 to 6 feet?
I prefer 4. Yes, if you could do 4 to 6.
Mr. Chairman, we could, if the commission deemed it appropriate, we could make a revision to the end of that last sentence and say the parking and travel aisles to the west by a minimum of 4 feet.
by a minimum of four feet.
We have a min-max now, why would we remove the max?
It doesn't say, it says five, six feet.
Because they always could have limited, see them, in order to make, they could always adjust the amount of parking spaces, but it gives them a little flexibility.
Okay, are you ready to hear the part of this?
The other item was in regards to Mr. Shay's letter. The comment number three indicates as a minimum, the existing lateral should be upgraded to six inches. I kind of prefer, if we could, to have WPCA dictate that, just in the event that they are content. What we've got is an existing condition out of the existing school, is two sixes, they go into a manhole, and then it comes out as four. So if the, if the four is okay, from a new capacity standpoint, we're only adding three toilets, so the new lateral can certainly be four inches. But I don't want to get locked into the six inches if WPCA didn't think it was necessary to upgrade the whole thing. So I don't know if we can tweak that or not.
I think the town engineer has made his statement. Hard pressed to adjust.
What it does say here is, what should revise accordingly and coordinate with WPCA. I think that's what you're saying.
I am, he's just in, he's inserted the add a minimum, which may or may not be what WPCA would require. It may be, and so I may be totally wasting my time, I just, economics being what they are for the church, I'm trying to make sure they don't build anything they don't have to build. Obviously speaking, that's all.
Give me a moment, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. We don't know the town engineer's reason for saying six inches.
Yeah, but it's strange that he put it in this last...
And to coordinate with the WPCA.
To coordinate with the WPCA, and what they're saying is, if the WPCA is happy with four inch, he doesn't want, they don't want to be left with six inch.
Don't want to have to change it for no reason. I understand that, but I don't...
Yeah, I'm just curious as to why he also put that in there, though. He put that in there as, I think they're the ultimate authority. Right, which is what you're saying.
Mr. Chairman, staff made a recommendation to have number eight, nineteen, simply reference the town engineer's rap, letter. What may be more appropriate is if we broke those two items apart, where potential condition nineteen would be that the applicant shall incorporate the required information as referenced by the town engineer and his twelve-four-two-thousand-seventeen comment number two at the bottom of his letter. Item number twenty, the applicant shall submit the required information as referenced by the town engineer in his twelve-four-two-thousand-seventeen comment number three in coordination with the WPCA. Ultimately, the WPCA will determine the appropriate pipe size in consultation with the LURV team and the town engineer.
So the WPCA rules, they're, they set the regulations, so it's going to be their say.
They have the final say.
They have the final say, so, okay, any more areas that you've come in, son?
We're content with the conditions of draft.
Okay, who wants to make the motion?
I think it's your Jerry, you're excited about that.
Jerry, you want to make the motion, Jerry?
You have to read everything.
In a clear way, yes, I think if it's detailed enough, you could reference the motion for application number seventeen dash fifty-three, as it relates to the thirteen general development modification slash conditions and the additional seven site plan modifications slash conditions of approval as amended to incorporate item number fourteen, west four feet, west a minimum of four feet. With the addition of number nineteen, the applicant shall incorporate the required information as referenced by the town engineer and his December four-two-thousand-seventeen letter number two on the bottom of the page. And item number two, the applicant shall address the engineer's comment contained in his twelve-four-two-thousand-seventeen letter, comment number three, bottom of the page, in coordination with the WPCA.
And in sixteen, change uh to the, as you pointed out. Is there a, is that the, with that?
Would you want me to, this typed out, like, take that and then changes that around the record, uh, the to uh, and put that, or what Jamie just said? I mean, typically, I would just go type all these plus stages that they...
The changes in fourteen, sixteen, and then nineteen and twenty are new conditions, which Jamie just gave us.
I'll second.
You okay with that, Jerry? Okay. Second is, Madonna, everybody happy?
Dave, I would just offer for the record, it's my intention to vote on this in support of this application, but I'd want the record to indicate that I have reviewed the minutes of the prior meetings that relate to this topic, and I've seen the SCPV broadcasts of the prior meetings and reviewed the application material.
Thank you. We knew you would, though. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, no, I know, you've been very diligent.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay. We're on to application seventeen fifty-five of Stonefield Engineering, the Bank of America Site Plan Amendment.
Mr. Chairman, again, the application before you, seventeen dash fifty-five, for Bank of America, is a proposed site plan amendment associated with a reconfiguration of the sidewalks on the southern side of the property, as well as a modification to the proposed landscaping. The bank does have representation here this evening with regards to this. DRB did make a favorable recommendation on the approval of this plan with the stipulation that a final landscape plan is submitted prior to construction based on plant availability and final size and distribution of that plant material within the southern side area. Staff has prepared a simple letter to the commission with a recommended draft motion in attachment A.
Okay, does the applicant have something to just say?
I don't have anything further, if you'd like me to go through it again, it's good, other than that, we're happy with the motion as drafted.
Who's seen this, would you like to?
I have seen the video, and I've seen the material. I think it's a great investment by Bank of America on that property, and I'm happy to suggest it's overdue, but I think it's a great investment, so I certainly support.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time coming back.
Absolutely. I got a great restaurant right next door, I lie.
Okay, I sense the commission is ready to move on this application. Can I agree? Everybody agree? Okay, who wants to make the motion? We have a motion here. Okay, Mr. Secretary.
I'm looking at this one for mother.
No, no, you're the secretary.
Are we reading this one? I move to approve application seventeen fifty-five of Stonefield Engineering, agent Bank of America, Fleet Bank owner, for a site plan amendment for proposed site approvals to properly locate at seven forty Hot Meadow Street, with certain modifications and conditions. We've actually revoked them there. So, let's see, so the motion is with certain modifications and conditions for site plan amendment for proposed site approval in sidewalks and landscaping, seven forty, seven forty Hot Meadow Street per the Simsbury Center code as defined of the following site plan prepared by Stonefield Engineering. We don't have that listed.
The plan's listed before you...
On the site plan, look, take out the following.
Yeah, so we're going to remove the site plan following there, because I can't see the number. See one through?
One through eight.
One through eight?
Mm-hmm.
Is there dated?
They are dated, August eighteenth, two thousand seventeen.
What date?
August eighteenth.
August eighteenth, prepared by the Stonefield Engineering. The required modifications to the application and conditions of approval are, now we'll reference the, the letter from planning director to incorporate general development modifications, conditions of approval, items one through three, and site plan modifications, conditions of approval, four and five.
Second? I'll second it. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Dave, just a little more.
Yep.
Is there a reference in that motion that was, kind of went out of, to the letter we have in our hands, because the letter we have in our hands doesn't have a date on it.
The motion stands independent, the recommended motion's independent of the letter.
Okay, it'll be undated letter to me, which I received today. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carrie's, six, nothing, thank you.
Thank you very much, enjoy dinner.
All right, the next two items are, I'm curious, we're going to open in January, so we can table those. My motion to table seventeen fifty-six.
Do we actually table? I move that we table application seventeen fifty-six and seventeen fifty-seven until our January eighth meeting, twenty eighteen, at seven o'clock in the main meeting.
Second?
Second.
Madonna, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity on that, I believe we do not have the main meeting room available to us, we will be in the small meeting room at the library.
On the eighteenth?
On the...
Or in January?
In January.
In January?
Yeah, I just, just take, when your agenda goes out, take a look at that, because there's some movement between the meeting on the eighteenth and the meeting on the eighth. Maybe the small program room on the eighteenth, and okay on the eighth.
So application seventeen fifty-seven, the people from the Good Village area of Terriffel prefer that their name be spelled correctly.
We'll take care of that.
One R, two Fs. I think there's somebody who has a bumper sticker...
The tall ones are doubled. That's how you remember how to spell Terriffel.
There's somebody that's got a bumper sticker that says that up in Terriffel. Anyway, we have no new applications, general commission business. Jamie, have any comments?
Nothing new this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Have we geared up on rewrite of the regs?
Rewrite of our zoning regulations, we, as we referred to the terminology, that we had a deck of cards, they were thrown in the air, we have them back in their appropriate suits, we are reviewing to put them in the appropriate order. That only gets us back to what you have. We will be looking at, at the beginning of this year, either continuing with our expanded contract with Glenn Chardler, but based on his availability, we may be looking to go out for an RFQ to bring on a planning and legal team to take those reshuffled cards and make them in a workable document for you.
Okay, and I think that there's one...
And Mike has mentioned also that he understands, that's my assistant there, that depending on workload in January and February, depending on permitting load, that Mike will take on, we'll say, more day-to-day responsibilities of our office, that will allow me to be freed up to work more congruently with your regulations, to try and deliver them in the spring, if not early summer.
Okay, I think this commission, I think we all should recognize that there are several things in our zoning regulations that are begging to be dealt with and adjusted, and we need to look at some of the things that we passed and decide which of those we really want to keep the way they are, because they're working, and those things that are not working the way we want to, and I think we need to keep it in our mind when we're going through the day-to-day business, that we should go back and address those and make sure that we get those done. Okay?
Where do we stand on the moratorium for WHOZ?
It has lapsed. What's it says? I didn't hear the...
Your laps, the moratorium laps.
Moratorium laps.
On the workforce housing...
And just to go back on that one, it was one of these items that you either had to let the moratorium lapse, or you would have needed to entertain a text amendment from a prior applicant who had a workforce housing application approved, who needed to make a modification to it. So, in any manner, you needed to do a text amendment to amend your moratorium language to allow for an amendment to a previously approved, given the state of development right now, the moratorium lapse. Again, you have this workforce housing overlay zone, that if someone doesn't want to work within, they just eight thirty G you. So if they don't like the provisions of a friendly workforce housing arrangement and want more density or don't want to follow those design standards, they can do an eight dash thirty G, and your regulations don't apply to them.
I think that was the whole intent behind that, was to avoid the thirty Gs.
How'd that work?
Didn't, didn't really work too well, no. We're not the only municipality that...
No, you are not.
No.
Again, so you have a regulation there, and I think, again, as part of the rewrite, and we've had this discussion before, I think the initial scope of the workforce housing overlay zone was very focused on specific areas in town. As the regulation morphed through discussion, it potentially lost that focus, and it was applied to the entire town with no ties to a state highway, or sewer water, or proximity to school, or walkability to services. And again, it could land anywhere in town.
I think when we adopted it, you remember, Dave, we're only talking about six or eight parcels within a town, that we assumed somebody would overlay.
Correct. So again, as Mr. Ryan has mentioned tonight, perhaps we'll say homework for December and January is to think about the existing state of the regulations. What has come before you in the last few years as a commission? What seemed to be troubling? Or what seemed to be an application that in one section of regulation you said you could do it this way, but another section of the regulation slightly contradicted a prior section, and if we went to a third section, there was even other issues that brought less certainty to the prior two sections, as well as issues with regards to workforce housing. And, you know, again, I don't have a quick fix for workforce housing, but is it, you know... And it, you know, again, I don't have a quick fix for workforce housing, but is it, you know, simple line that has to be located within a thousand feet of of a state highway or five hundred feet of a statewide or has to above a state highway? So at least the statewide highway potentially has public transit associated with it. It may have sidewalks associated with it. It may be closer to a town. It could be simple. It has to have frontage on Route ten. But I think that's subject matter that will move us forward.
But it's your suggestion that we do nothing for now until the day comes when we can make some time for it? In the meantime, another applicant might
What I'm saying is as we come into January or February as a commission, we should make time for it.
Oh, okay.
To start that conversation because as we're more spending more time on the reorganization of the existing regulations, we're going to have things that we need to bounce off of you. You know, items of, you know, no sheds in a front yard. Regardless of, or, and no sheds in a front yard, no sheds or outbuildings in front of a home. So if you're in the western portion of town and your house is a thousand feet off the road, you can't build a barn in front of it according to your regulations. Did you intend to have it that way? Or was it intended to, you know, on Plain Hill Road where houses are closer that you can't put a shed in front of your house when your house only sits forty feet off the road or fifty feet off the road? Or was it intended to not allow someone to have a barn in front of their house when they have ten acres and their house is a thousand feet off the road? Those are questions staff has sometimes. And it appears over time that regulations evolve and on occasions, and you've seen it as a commission, that someone proposes a text amendment. And that text amendment is worded in such a manner to allow that applicant to do what they needed to do. But five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years later, there's some potential unintended consequences of that. Whether someone can do something you never intended to or someone's prevented from doing something that you never even thought they wouldn't be able to do. Such as if you had a house a thousand feet off the road, you can't put a barn in front of it eight hundred feet off the road. We have to tell people you have to be behind the house. I'm not sure if that was intended because as I drive down Skatton Brook and West Mountain Road and others, there, there you know, fire town road, there appear to be some barns in front of houses on old agricultural properties that are part of the landscape and fabric of the community. But under a modern code, we can't do it. We, I, we're in the process, we've developed some maps. But I had New England designer, Mansfield, Connecticut, assist me in this that shows your R twenty-five, your R forty, your R sixty, how a house setbacks and everything relates to that from a code standpoint. And we can begin to have that conversation that here's a front yard setback. Here's a house, even though I have a front yard setback, I still can't do certain things in front of the house. Again, having that discussion and asking, is this what you want a house lot to look like? And maybe there are some differences that a house lot in an R twenty-five looks a little bit different than a house lot in an R one sixty.
Okay.
I have a somewhat related sort of issue. On the issue of rules or procedures of, you know, the zoning regulations. Insert of refamiliarizing my stuff with myself with some issues. Hey, I come across in my folder the Town of Simsbury Zoning Commission Rules of Procedure, updated last, at least my copy's in two thousand and eleven. I'm wondering if everyone is familiar with this document and if not, is it still in effect and if not, should it be? Is that something that you and Mike could have a conversation about before we get together the next time?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, it's not, you know, it's not earth shaking.
Yeah.
It's a document that stands instead of bylaws. They don't use the term bylaws, but
Again, it, it, that is more of a guideline for commission practices. It's not a bylaw which, you know, a lot of municipalities have specific bylaws. You shall hold an election at your first regularly scheduled meeting in November to elect officers.
You know, sometimes Peter Sinsel might be familiar with this. I don't know if he had a handle, but it was carefully titled from, as a result.
Yeah, we can potentially add that to your agenda either on the eighteenth or January eighth.
If it's still in effect, it maybe it's just a matter of sending it out or, you know, attach it to the next pack here to your copy. See what you think.
Motion for adjourned?
Second? All in favor? Opposed? Six nothing.